I call the Dixon County Commission to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have the one addition to our agenda this morning is to review and approve the K Works audit report for the highway shop. So I move that we approve the agenda with that addition.
Second.
If it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The consent agenda includes amendments of the September 26 work session and regular meeting abatements of $1,522.66 and wire payments of $9,620.95.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, if it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioners' comments and committee reports. Lynn, did you have anything this week?
Kind of a light week, actually.
Yeah.
So I really don't have anything to report. Just have some things coming up and, I mean, the only thing is, I guess we have this meeting tonight and Craig is going to be attending and I plan to attend on the economic summit and the chamber sent out an invitation on it. But also, Craig, I think you were at a previous meeting and you have some county people involved. So that'll be tonight at 6:30. I'll attend that.
Craig, did you have anything?
Yeah, Janelle and I last Thursday attended the North Central Regional Planning Commission in Concordia. We had two legislators there, Vern Swanson and I can hardly part with me, a lady from the Boyd area. And then one of Tim Muleskamp's office aides was there. Really got bogged down on the sealed and carry. I mean, we only had too much time to be there and we didn't really get to talk about anything besides that. I mean, it's done and over with and so it's, and then the Affordable Care Act, of course, discussed that to no end. That was it. And then I did get an email from Ginger Sloan about the wanting information on the rocks right outside the courthouse. I know the people are interested in the rock story. How much are the rocks? Where are they now? How much did it cost taxpayers? And who is responsible for that situation? I'll respond to her when we get that information.
Okay. The meeting this evening, it kind of depends whether I'm in the field or not. If it rains, I'll probably be able to attend, but otherwise, the farming community is quite busy right now and a lot of things to get done here this fall. So I did mention that with the good harvest, it makes more work, but if you have a drought, you don't really have too much to harvest. But this year, it's a good harvest, so it is, you see a lot more trucks going up and down the road here this fall, probably. Okay, presentation, petitions, proclamation and other big comments. We do have a proclamation. We have it scheduled for 11:15, so Brad, why don't you fill in for a few minutes here?
Okay. Craig may have been advised last week when you met with Doug McKinnon that our project has been given a green light by the state architect and do a study on their project at the school, which is a good sign that the state's behind that. So they'll be proceeding with that, I assume. Providing you several handouts, one is the, we've got two of them there for the city way cleanup last night, come and tap it last week, I'm sorry, the tally sheet. We took in a total of 154 tons of garbage, which equated to about $6,500 cost for us. And it's going to break under by the cities, if the cities brought it in. Cities have totaled 68 tons, so. And then on the longer sheet, each one of the cities that participated has broken down that way as well, just for your information. It was, I would categorize it as fairly successful. We did have some highway guys Thursday, Friday and Saturday that we assigned out there to help Randy here on load. And so, had a good week. It went very well. No problems were reported, so. You also have the document I gave you from K Work a couple of weeks ago. They did an audit, safety audit of our highway shop, which they do periodically. We did have, I believe, four areas of concern, all of which have been identified and taken care of. None of them were categorized as major and we did get a good report from them. So we'll sign that and get that back to them that they've been taking care of. The other, another document that you have there is the K Camp general information questionnaire. We do a questionnaire that we fill out every year and essentially that just is a report on how many employees we have, the departments we have in function, so they can gauge our insurance claimant off of that information. And we're required to make sure you have a copy of that. I don't know that there were any substantial or changes from last year that we really needed to change. Over the, in the health department, we do have one licensed nurse practitioner now that we didn't have last year as opposed to a registered nurse, which is a good thing for us, so. But we'll get that sent back in. I've been emailing you some information on the coroner position and you'll have the resolution when we get down to that portion of the meeting to appoint Dr. Doug Sherrin as county coroner. The way that process works is the district coroner, who's Jimmy Jenkins, Dr. Jenkins of Junction City, makes the appointment of the other three counties coroners, deputy coroners in the judicial district, and then each county commission confirms that appointment. So the resolution you have that on today is confirming the appointment and approving, I guess if you will, the appointment of Dr. Sherrin as county coroner for Dickinson County, deputy county coroner. We also had the issue with the, that we knew it was going to come up sooner or later, I guess, the change in legislature in 2010 put the funding and expenses processing of unclaimed bodies on the counties as opposed to SRS that were responsible for it prior to that. And we have had our first, first incident where we had a death that would be categorized as an unclaimed body that we processed. I've met with the two mortuaries here in Abingdon and people with the other two in here available in Harrington and Chapman. Been a recent agreement, a contracted rate that is commensurate with what other counties have done and I think it's very favorable to us and him. I certainly appreciate them working with us on that, so to be able to process that and something like that. Where they, according to the statute, unclaimed body, the coroner can order cremated and then the expenses the county had to pay for, so essentially. And I have agreements for you today to sign for the four mortuaries that we'll send to them. That way we have a documented agreement on the cost of what we're, the negotiated cost that we will pay them should this arise again, so.
But the one we did have has agreed to this also?
They reduced that, yeah, which was Dan Urs and I talked to.
So he does.
Andy and he reduced that price.
Reduced the price.
The contractor price, yes, and we very much appreciate that, so.
Okay.
You might visit with the coroner or the funeral homes, too. Just carrying it a step further, I think a direct cremation is what that's based on price-wise and I think if there's ever any suspicion or a certain situation, sometimes they have to involve an involvement in autopsy and so on.
Yes.
And so. We pay for that anyway.
We pay for that anyway.
Do we? Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Is there, is there anything on the price, though, that that's?
We do have a negotiated price with the company in Topeka.
So that's been set up? Okay. I just want to make sure we had that.
The forensics company in Topeka that does the autopsies, yes. That came about two, three years ago, I guess. And years ago, we used to use a forensic company in Wichita. That doctor is retired. Now it's a company out of Topeka that does essentially the majority of, and we have a contracted price with them, so already if an autopsy is required, so.
Thank you. What do you usually have, two or three a year, don't we?
Yes, we do. We have a number of them, so. The highway department, just briefly, is they're replacing and should finish today the culvert there at Southside of Towneburg on Fair Road. There was no, that wouldn't wash culvert, but the road's been closed there for a couple of days. They should end up back open today. Looks like the one that's going to cooperate is kind of questionable this morning. Then our bridge crews are moving, or they were planning on moving today up to 1581 First Road, which is the little structure that collapsed under the excessive weight earlier this year. And they checked this morning and it rained up there pretty heavily this morning, so didn't look like they were going to get to move up there today, so we'll see. But they'll be starting on replacing that, that structure here in the near future, so. And then you have the year-to-date budget report. As far as expenditures, they are all within line of what we would expect being roughly three quarters of the way through the year. The one thing, and we can discuss it briefly, is the sales taxes are down a little bit. I anticipate we'll probably see that go down a little bit more in the next month or two with the restricted access of I-70 getting off at Abingdon for, with the construction on I-70, certainly not going to hurt, certainly not going to help the issue any, so. If you have any questions on that.
One that's scheduled to be opened back after November, Brad? Supposedly seven weeks, but I didn't know when.
I would speculate at this point.
Yeah.
They're planning on closing the other lane, though?
Oh, next year.
Next year.
Yeah. Yeah, they originally told us like seven to 10 weeks, so if that's the case, then I'll be back open pretty quick. What I can't say is I've seen a lot of change out on the highway, so I don't know where they're at on the, so. That's all I've got.
Yeah, well, it's 11:15 and we have a proclamation to declare October 6th to the 12th as Dixon County 4-H Week.
Here's our copy and Jill has a copy also, so there'll be two of them to sign.
I have the fancy one-way frame in our office.
Okay. Do you want to, Lynn, just go ahead and maybe read through that.
Okay. This is the National 4-H Week 2013 proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of Dickinson County, Kansas. Whereas October 6th through October 12th, 2013, is a National 4-H Week in recognition of the largest out-of-school education program for youth. And whereas 4-H Week is observed nationally by over six and a half million 4-H youth. And whereas there are over 300 4-Hers in 13 community clubs active in 4-H in Dixon County. And whereas there are over 100 adult volunteer leaders in the country. And whereas 4-H buildings, or 4-H builds on experience to give equal training to head, heart, hands and health. Whereas 4-H as part of the K-State Research and Extension is a program where youth learn together in all kinds of projects, events and activities. And whereas 4-H has been helping youth and adults learn, grow and work together for more than 100 years, urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of the special program which gives youth the chance to learn together and on their own as part of Dixon County 4-H. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Dixon County, do hereby proclaim October 6th through October 12th, 2013, as Dickinson County 4-H Week throughout the county and urge all citizens to attend, observe and support the work of the 4-H clubs done this third day of October, 2013.
Okay. I move that we declare the week of October 6th to the 12th as the National 4-H Week and honor Dixon County Week as also.
Second.
If it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Is there somebody that's going to take a picture?
There are. We have some of our 4-Hers here with us. The Prince family is here.
Okay.
So if you guys would like to stand up, could you introduce yourselves and maybe tell us, they're all from the Detroit Ramblers 4-H Club. And go ahead and tell us maybe your favorite projects?
My name's Rebecca and my favorite project is how we horse.
My name is Jesse and my favorite project this year was a cross.
My name is Josiah and my favorite project is dairy.
My name's Abby and my favorite art is crochet.
My name's John. My favorite object is hor, my favorite thing is horticulture.
Very good. Well, if you guys want to come up here, we usually do a picture standing behind the commissioners.
It looks that good if you want to.
There you go. Smile. Come on, Jess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm good.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Like you, we do have a very strong 4-H in Dixon County that we could be proud of and all the youth that are going through the program and how it has benefited them as in their adult lives and.
I heard the dairy project was favorite, weren't?
Well, not too many, not too many are in that project anymore, but it served, served our boys well.
And Jesse did have one of our really neat projects that we took to state fair this year. He made knives, homemade knives as part of his arts and crafts project.
Oh.
And they were chosen as one of our top five exhibits from all of our arts and crafts of the county. They're pretty neat, so those got to go to state fair. How did you make those?
Sawed.
I mean, how do you, tell them about how you put them together. How it's made.
I sawed and drew a shape of a, like, a, like, a, and out, like, a deer antler cut pocket and then draw two holes and finish it and then cross that.
And what did you use for your handles?
Deer antler or what?
Had my trouble finding deer antlers this year?
Well, we found one last year, but not like this year.
People have been good and giving, so that's helpful.
Supposedly you could contribute an antler, maybe.
Well, when I was late, we, we found, we were out walking boundaries and it was a record one for the state and they were found right together. I mean, I can't remember, it was like 16 points by my dad. An atypical. But I mean, it's when we were walking, I mean, usually they lose within, you know, like next to each other, but it was huge. That's been 10, 12 years ago.
Thank you very much. We love you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
And we do have radio recordings that the kids have been doing this week that will be on KABI next week to celebrate National 4-H Week.
Glad you could all be here this morning.
Hey, come in.
Did you have anything else, Brad?
No, I finished. I see any questions.
Getting back to sales tax, Brad, I mean, I'm looking at it here. Down, let's see where we at here? How much do you think it?
We just received July's collect.
Okay.
And because I was about 60 days behind.
So we really won't know till later what the revenues are going to be?
Exactly. And I've, Mr. N just whispered in my ear that apparently the highway's supposed to be open on a Monday.
Oh, okay.
So that'd be good, so. Apparently he doesn't stay within their projected timeline and I know that the businesses up there, I don't know, the whole city will certainly appreciate that, so.
You know, on the sales tax, for example, as a retailer, you know, we're just preparing our report now for September and then we'll turn that into the state, so by the time all that happens, it's always a few months lapse before it actually shows up that it goes to the state and is returned back to the cities and counties.
Doug, what's the city of Chapman's sales tax receipt? Are they about normal, what they were, or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's been staying very consistent. They've been pleased.
Okay.
And we're not, you know, our annual projection was 1.1 million. We're at 849, so, you know, we're.
We could possibly get there.
Probably got to meet that. I mean, unless it just totally shocks me and this interstate project really shoots a center foot, but, you know, I'd like to see more than the 1.1. We know we always estimate low, of course, but, you know, not much wigged up, but that's going to be what it is, so.
Any other questions on our cash balances? Most, most everything is kind of standard budget.
Yeah. Janelle said she doesn't have any concerns at this point on any of them, so.
Yeah.
Everybody's done a good job as they usually do, so.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything to add today?
No, thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution here today to appoint the county coroner due to the retirement of Dr. Sworting. And this resolution would be 100313 is to appoint Dr. Doug Sherrin to serve at any capacity of the deputy district coroner of Dixon County, Kansas.
I would so move.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. You know, we'll go ahead and take this up. The review and approve the K Works audit report for the highway shop and Brad had commented that there were four things that they recommended that we do and those, those things have been taken care of or soon will be taken care of. So we just need to approve the compliance check work with the K Works at the highway department. So I move that we approve this audit report.
Second.
If it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I guess I'm the only one that signs that.
Yes, just yours.
Okay. Our next item is Resolution 100313A. And this resolution establishes a reasonable cremation or burial fees for unclaimed bodies required to be paid from the county's general fund in accordance to the Kansas statute 22A, page 216. I don't know if we're going to go through all that, but.
Well, I think.
Just highlight it.
Yeah, it's kind of been covered that this is consistent with, with what other counties are doing. And then also you have, this is a discussion background with both funeral homes.
The Board of County Commissioners hereby establish a sum of $750 as reasonable compensation for cremation or burial of unclaimed bodies subject to the following conditions. A deceased person must be a resident of Dixon County and B, the expense of cremation or burial shall first be paid from the assets of the deceased person, including but not limited to any property found on the body. So that could be any assets that the person owns.
Preferably cash.
Cash, a deep pocket. The commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County reserve the right to authorize the county councillor or contact attorney to commence estate proceedings in the name of the deceased as the county would be a third-party creditor under existing Kansas probate law. Now, does that mean, who's ahead of us then?
What that, what that means is that if there was assets that could be probated, the county could file and open the state for the individual even though we're not relative of the individual for the purpose of filing the claim and our claim would be superior to others.
I see.
You're trying to retain what expenses we have.
Yeah, trying to get back the expense and not to, not to make money on it, just trying to get back the cost that the county would have advanced.
What's the, does he have contract for a year?
Actually, I think it's an open agreement, isn't it?
Okay.
It's early, it's early day notice.
Okay.
And what we raised with the two Abingdon funeral homes, and they were both extremely willing to work with us and I appreciate that, is a $700, $750 flat fee and then the cost of the cremation, which they don't cremate here.
Right.
They take them to Swinata. And any other expenses that may come up, like maybe a body bag that was used or whatever. If the person had to be kept in storage, the body in storage for a while, they had to pay that, they would bill us that at their cost or would be no increase in that, so. And that's kind of what other counties have done. You know, we, this came about two or three years ago and we've kind of sat on it and this, been fortunate, this is the first one that we've had. The other counties across the state range anywhere from five to 750, 800 from the base fee, so. And my, my conversations with Bill Carlson, Becker Carlson, Martin and Dan, is, you know, we don't want them to have out-of-pocket expenses, but at the same time, we want to be dealing with taxpayer money and pay what it costs them. And we, we agree when I talk to them. It's more of a community service that they're providing for us and we appreciate that, so.
Other words, if it comes back and forth again, it'll be one that, why they want to raise their rates?
They would, if they wanted to raise their rates, they'd have to come back and forth again. From my conversations, I don't foresee that happening. I'd probably need a motion for that, I would guess, yeah, to adopt that agreement, so.
I would go ahead and move that we adopt this agreement with the funeral homes concerning the funding of cremation of unclaimed bodies and indigenous descendants.
Second.
Okay, if we move it second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
There's, there's an original for us and an original for the funeral home for each one of the four.
Is that all we have, then?
Three or two.
I would go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
If we move it second, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Be an aye, Craig?